Let's, uh, we're gonna go ahead and get started. And, uh, welcome to the, uh, work session here this evening on, uh, geez, what the heck's the name here? It's the April 2nd, Urban Renewal Work Session. Do we need to do anything official? Okay, Nancy?
Commissioner O'Neely.
Here.
Commissioner Pauli.
Here.
Commissioner Roth. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Yates.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Mom.
Here.
Commissioner Edgar.
Here.
And Chair Shaw.
Here.
All right, thank you. Okay. Uh, discussion items, Urban Renewal Project Prioritization Brainstorming Session. Eric Underwood.
Yes, thank you. This is a continuation of the last session that we had. So we got, uh, last time we got through our four values, which total six. You can see them there on the, on the wall. And then we've got, got through two project activities, economic development opportunities at North End. With that, we defined what the North End was. And so that's written into the results and the benefits for that activity. We got through the train depot use, and we'll have another brainstorming session on that on the floor.
Can I make one comment on that? This is your club invite, 'cause I'm not gonna be here on the fourth.
Yeah.
There was an idea floated about putting a coffee shop in there at some point. I own a coffee shop. That's a bad idea. Just for what it's worth, I think it's a really bad idea. Not because of competition to me, 'cause it's really not. But I just don't think it would work. I really think it's a, unless you had a drive-through, you'd have to spend millions to do that. It just wouldn't work. In my opinion. There's not gonna be enough volume from the train traffic to make it work.
That is right. Thanks for your input on that. And so, after the train depot, we get to the transfer of the Stimson property into the wetlands as part of the jug handle project. So with that, we had a question about what actually we mean by the Stimson property. I tried to get a map made, but it wasn't made in time, so I found this one. And you might have to, I can walk it around here, but what we're talking about is this piece here. This is Home Depot, the metro station, and then the Stimson property right along that.
So it runs behind the transfer station also.
Yes. Does anybody have an idea?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I think the maps are really important. Every time we bring something up, unless you're the mayor who's been looking at this stuff for ten years, this stuff is really hard for me to follow without them.
Sure, okay.
I have, I have the great big map out there in the car that has all of this property all identified specifically. If you want, I could grab it. It's a huge one.
Maybe later, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's see how much.
All we need is that.
Yeah. No, just so we know. So, so because that land is behind the metro's south station, I mean, it's really pretty unusable anyway, right?
It's undevelopable, yeah.
Then what would the benefit be of turning it into a wetland?
Well, I think the idea was to trade it, um, to the city for the 12th and Main property. There's, there's that developer property that's owned by the city on 12th and Main.
Mm-hmm.
And so it would be a swap.
So the property, the property's already been taken and, and was dedicated as a wetlands for, or stormwater mitigation area for those jug handle.
Okay.
And, and in the, kind of in the charter of what urban renewal lands are for, it falls out of that, kind of the, the use.
Oh, okay.
And so the idea would be to swap it to the, and we voted on to swap it to the city for some undetermined piece of parcel of land of equal value.
Ah, I see.
So that it's just a swap across. We get something that, that, that might be, that we could-
Bring something else into the urban renewal.
That has, that has, that we can use the kind of leverage off of to create development.
But it stay wetlands?
It stay wetlands.
That stay wetlands.
It's not, it's not developable. So what the city would get would be not developable.
The city would be, city would acquire the wetlands.
Yes.
Now, the, did you say 12th and Main or 10th and Main?
12.
So 12th and Main.
12th and Main. It's actually two different types.
It's in the urban renewal district.
It's in the urban renewal district, but the name on the title is the city board.
City. Now, they don't, they own 12th and Main and 10th and Main, or?
No, urban renewal district.
Owns 10th.
Owns the 10th and Main.
Okay. Sounds like a nice little trade.
Yes.
Um, the urban renewal agency took action on that. The city commission has not yet, has it?
That's what I was trying to remember.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, both, both entities, if were to happen, would have to take action.
Right.
Okay, so what do we need to do here?
Well, so we need to say, okay, so if we were to do that, what would the results and impacts of that activity be on the urban renewal district? How would that benefit the urban renewal district, basically?
Uh.
And then we'll need to determine what the priority level of that is. What, how much energy do we need to focus on this?
It should be a low-impact thing. Just do it and get it done. But the benefit really comes back. It puts a product into our hands that we can actually do something with.
Well, it kind of depends, Paul, what the city wants for their property, probably, doesn't it, huh? Versus our little piece of wetlands.
Well, it's what, the asset, what we paid for it, that piece of parcel.
Yeah.
And if we get a correspondingly equal parcel in what is paid for, we're just transferring dollar for dollar value.
Okay.
Okay? And that's-
Well, I think we're gonna have to have Eric do some more research on that and talk with the city and see what they're gonna be willing to, to swap for. So how much it's gonna cost.
But I don't know what this piece is valued at here, but I do know that we just had recent appraisals down above 10th and 12th and Main. 12th and Main property is worth about 200, something, 270.
And that's the city.
That's the city's.
It's kind of getting-
And yet we've been, I mean, and yet we've put it on, there's a sign there, and we're marketing it, basically, as urban renewal commission. We, we, it's so, um, I mean, all of those pieces are owned, some by the city, and that's why Paul's been putting this matrix, matrix together, 'cause I, I, we are so, it's so confusing on who owns the title of all these little properties. Some of them are getting rent. Some of the rent's going to the city on properties that the city does own, that urban renewal owns. Some of the rent is going to urban renewal on properties that the city owns. And we're making goals as urban renewal commission about property we don't own. And, and vice versa.
Well, I think that's where you're gonna have to maybe come up with a map for us that says who owns what.
Well, that's already the point.
I have that now.
So I think, I mean, well, my point about this is, though, is if the city, if the city's property is that 12th and Main, and that's one of the focuses that urban renewal agency wants to develop, then we have to deal with that problem. And that, that kind of warrants a transfer of some sort of that property.
It could, it, it could be-
Or we're not gonna be able to move forward on that top goal.
It doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt marketing that property in the urban renewal district 'cause it's in the urban renewal district.
Right, I understand that.
And spending money on that. But when it comes down to doing a deal, providing urban renewal incentives, um-
We have.
I think, I think, I think when it comes to the city, the city's got to look at it and see, well, where did the city monies come from to procure it? Does the city, in fact, want that money to come back into the general fund for other purposes? And I think that's a debate that has to occur at the city commission.
Yeah. So what, what level would you put on this, then, Doug?
I'm not, no.
No, 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 for this? We're supposed to, like, put forth priority levels. Are you thinking?
I mean, I think the urban renewal commission could put one priority level on it. It may not be the, or, it may not be the priority level of the city.
Yeah, but that's what we're doing right now. So would it be, like, low on the priority list? I mean, do we, are we, like, high? Do we need to transfer?
I think it could shift from one end to the start of the world, depending on the other scenario. I think it's hard to make that determination so much on.
If we're trying to aggregate-
So then, do we have to, like, put this on the burner for a while?
Well, we're trying to sell it now.
Yeah, we're, we're-
I, I think it's a, I think it's a priority for us. That's a very, I mean, if we could acquire that, that property, my gosh, you know, I think that that's a-
So would you say it's a four or a five?
I would actually, and five is the highest. I would actually put it at a five myself. I think five on that one. And we have a, a comment from Nancy Kreischer back there.
I have a technical question. Does the urban renewal, because you really need to own the property to redevelop it as an urban renewal commission, or can they work on a city property?
It just has to be in the district.
Just has to be in the plan, right?
So that ownership thing, I don't think is really-
Other than it gives us greater tools to work with in our tool chest.
Okay, Doug.
Thank you.
It's, I think, I think the urban renewal commission can take, take a decision in its own right. The benefit to selling it, the money comes back to the urban renewal commission. The city commission will need to look at, from my standpoint, where did the money come from to buy the property?
Oh, well, yeah.
And so, and so you might find, we might, I might find myself on both sides of the fence. I would prefer to give it a four, not the highest priority.
Okay. All in favor of a four?
It's definitely a high priority, 'cause it ties in with the other high priority.
Okay, I'll go with a four. Four it is.
Four is good. Four is good. And then are you thinking, like, one to three months, three to six months?
We can aggregate, uh, the sell.
It's a four, and we want to do, uh-
So.
Results impact benefit. I'm not sure where this zone gonna fall in there, Eric. What are you suggesting there?
What, I, I'm sorry.
What are you suggesting for that, for results impact? For much you've heard right now, so.
Uh, well, kind of what Paul just mentioned is facilitating urban renewal development.
Specifically, though, on 12th and Main.
Right.
By, to use it to purchase that property.
So I can write that. Any other thoughts on that?
So what do you think the action step is on that? First, to get an appraisal?
Appraisal's the-
On the wetlands?
On the wetlands?
On the wetlands.
Not on the wetlands.
I, I can tell you what our, what we bought it for. I got that property price.
Well, now that it's been made a wetland, the value, if you're going for an appraisal, they're gonna be looking at it completely different, so it may be far less.
That's not the fault of the urban renewal agency.
No.
Okay, Phil?
Seems to me that urban renewal commission, this has been my problem with urban renewal commission. At the beginning, when I first heard about it about 10 years ago, it's just a shell game. It's all the city. So when you worry about the city and the urban renewal, it's all the city. This is a shell game. We've got a shell game here, guys. The reason it's a shell game is we don't wanna go to, look for a bond, okay? That's the reason. Now, I see no purpose whatsoever in going and getting an appraisal on this property so that we can do, spend more money on an appraisal on city property, so that we can put it from one shell, under one shell to another.
Right.
Make a decision, but don't worry about what it's worth. It's a total waste of time. This is a shell game. We have to understand that. Now, you may not wanna call it that for cook reasons, but I'm not running for office, and that's why. Well, let's not worry too much about what these, who owns it, or, you know, that somebody screwed up the deed, because whoever did it two years ago knew it was a shell game when they didn't spend enough time looking at it.
So the, so the bottom line, Phil, would be that we just wanna change properties?
Just do it. Don't worry about it. It's all the city. The fact that we've got two different boards makes it a little more confusing.
You can put it four, but the city, the city commission has to discuss it and decide if they wanna get rid of it.
And it's, you know, it's, it's the same time, I told David, I'm pulling up the report. I found that the two properties on Second and Tumwater and Second, if, there, are in the name of the city, and urban renewal commission bought them. So we put out the money, but they got titled into the city of Oregon City. So this is just another example, when I'm going through the detail of all of the properties that the city has, that's an error that popped up.
All right.
So is there another results, impact, benefit that you see?
Not really. In my mind, it comes down to whose names own the title in this, basically.
So would one to three months, do you know?
I think one to three months, we should revisit it.
And be-
Revisit, yeah.
Let's not spend any money on appraisal.
No, I agree.
And then also, when the urban renewal district closes, all those properties go to the city anyway.
That's right. Everything transfers back to the city.
Yeah, all right.
So one to three months. Now, the action item is to move this over to the city commission.
Right.
Yeah, they've gotta have, we gotta have their input, and so we'll do it.
Okay. Yeah, something here. Okay, so are we all done on this one? Any more discussion? Okay.
Oh, you said Kathy Roth had some comments.
Yes, I'm sorry. Kathy does have some comments.
Did she have comments on that one?
I gave her a handout. I, I think she does, yes.
Is that her comment?
No.
Did you give comments to everybody?
Yes, I did. You should have a copy.
Is it this one?
No.
I don't know, Eric.
No, it's a separate sheet.
It's a separate sheet.
You've got it in your right hand.
Oh, yeah, that must be hers. That's hers.
Oh, this is her?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So did she have comments? You can have that one off.
She did.
Wetlands, uh, level three move. She says level three, move forward six to 12 months, so it's close.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted to make sure we had that included.
Yeah, I had to mention that those are her comments there, so therefore your references would go through these.
Okay, good, thank you.
Um, okay, so transfer, oh, I'm sorry. So this is terminating the existing urban renewal district and forming a smaller, forming smaller urban renewal areas in the city.
Could I speak to it? If I-
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay. What I, what, what this was about was just literally, we're, we're trying to, the current urban renewal plan really virtually shows, never shows a termination. Just shows it going on and on and on and on. If we follow what it's been doing, and the whole idea was, is that, that if we created smaller, more compact urban renewal areas that had defined planning to it, project plans, one starts, you start, you have a stop date, it pays for itself, and it leads to a termination, and money goes to the, the gain goes out as it should. And so the, the plan was, is to not stop urban renewal in any way, shape, or form, but to make it more businesslike. Make it into, into, into projects and areas. So if we were to do something with the mill site, and it, we, it, it becomes a whole urban renewal area, it doesn't, and it's going to go on to a 20- or 30-year bond to fund all of the projects or all of our involvement, it doesn't stop something else ending someplace else in the city and having a release of funds to all the other projects. So-
Paul, if I might?
Okay.
The, the existing urban renewal plan does have an end date, and the end date is when the projects are done.
Yeah.
And so I guess if that idea were gonna be taken up, it would have to be taken up by the city commission, 'cause it's their prerogative to decide how many and whether or not they have urban renewal districts. So that's an interesting point, but this commission can't make that decision, even if it, you can make a recommendation, I suppose.
And also, the mill's not in urban renewal.
I know.
And why does-
Is that on the sheet, the mill?
The blue hair, yeah, but the, the urban renewal commission only owns a small piece.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the scope of the district, I think, is an issue, a really important issue, and whether or not the entire Blue Hare in sight should be part of the district, I think, is-
Is that on there?
Well, that's, that's coming up. Blue Hare is coming up.
So we'll discuss that later.
Okay.
But it's, but it's within this scope, let's say as an example, that we go out there and decide to create an industrial employment area, uh, south of Kanema as an urban renewal district, because we, we can use the vehicle to aggregate together the necessary lands.
That would be, that would be a whole new district, and you, I mean-
But that's, but this is a, this is kind of, this is the idea of setting up districts.
What's the, what's the advantage of having, I never understood this. The issue of terminating it, one question. What's the advantage of creating multiple zones as opposed to multiple projects within one zone? What's the advantage?
Because, because-
Briefly, please.
Because if we do many projects, the bonding never allows forever a termination of the district, and that's been the history of it. This district started in 1977, and it's never, it's never ever got to a point where it's got planned.
But the termination is, don't you think conceptually that termination is a separate issue than the, than the number of districts that you have?
Well-
It's, it's because the desire is to continue urban renewal, but to use it in an appropriate manner. And right now, history's been pointing that we haven't.
Okay.
All right. We'll probably be talking about this one for a while here.
I would, I would agree.
You know, so let's, uh, do we wanna move on from this?
Yeah.
I'd like to, I think that the issue of the district boundaries is an important issue, really important. And I think the issue of zoning the North End is a really important issue, not the North End as you've previously defined it as. But further than that, it's not our, not our issue, but it's an issue to the city.
Okay.
And I think that this issue of the scope of the district is an issue too. Again, it's not our issue, it seems to me. It's the city commission's issue.
All right. Everybody okay? Should we move on?
Yep.
Well, I, I need to-
Let's put it at a one.
Yeah. It's still on there, Paul, we just, we're not-
We're tabling it.
We're good.
So, can we put down that you're-
Yeah, writing priorities, so.
Yeah.
We can't put everything at a five.
Yeah. 12 months, spring back in 12 months. Does that make you feel good?
12 months? 12, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Paul. Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
I'd like to thank my parents. They're great.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Explore economic development opportunities at the South End, that meaning the area of past Kanema.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about, just what you mentioned.
South, south.
South, south, yeah.
Okay.
So there's a-
And that's outside our current district.
That's right.
That's correct.
It's outside the district, it's outside the city limits.
So we have to get it annexed.
Isn't that outside our jurisdiction as a commission too?
No. Well, it's in the urban growth boundary, and it's contiguous to Oregon City's.
But isn't that a city commission issue?
Not a urban renewal commission issue?
Yes.
I'd just take it off the list.
Yep.
Well, I'm not, or do we wanna bring it to the commission, though, Phil, as a discussion item?
They're here at the table.
I, I don't, but, I mean, as far as, you know, the urban renewal, it's a, hey, come on.
Yeah, hit him on the shoulder there. Do it.
This is, this is shell 42, okay? But I think we have, do we wanna bring it to the, actually-
No, I would just say it's not our, it's not our issue. That'd be my recognition.
Ma'am, ma'am, make a very quick comment. We're going through a review over the next few years of our comprehensive plan. I think that would, might be a very good time to take a look at those particular issues.
The big issue.
Yeah.
Okay, the only reason I kind of brought this up, and I think Paul was kind of involved with it too, but just because that property is kind of available down there, and I thought it might be a good idea to visit it while it's available, and a lot of stuff hasn't been built on it yet down there. It's a, be a great site for an industrial park. So if it is a city commission thing, you know, so be it. I guess you've heard from us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I mean, I think the urban renewal commission can talk about it, see if there's a consensus or an interest in moving it forward. If the city commission did decide that they wanted to look at that, if the urban renewal commission was on board with that.
All right.
So I would talk about-
Let's go around and have just a real quick discussion, each person.
The big issue to me is having something that creates jobs locally and, and economic revitalization locally, and this could be employment and job lands.
Okay, so we got a favorable? Bring it to the city?
I, I definitely think it's important to talk about it. I just think we have, I mean, rivers, mill, homes, I mean, there's a lot of things on our plate.
Yeah.
That definitely is something we need to talk about. I don't think it rates on the high part of what we have right now.
Right, as far as urban renewal.
Right.
Mr. Real Estate Guy?
Yeah.
Definitely think that's south Kanema, if you have for industrial, should be long-range and part of our plan.
Okay.
And whether that goes urban renewal should be at least discussed.
All right. Phil?
I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Ma.
Do we own the property? Is it in the city limit?
Yeah, not in the, it's in urban growth, urban growth boundary.
So that means we have responsibility over it.
Yes.
It's not outside the city. It is outside the city.
It is outside the city.
Yeah.
So it has to be a totally different urban renewal district.
Right.
And it has to be annexed first.
That's correct, yeah.
You can expand the district.
And it has to be-
Has to be annexed first, and then you'd have to expand the urban renewal district.
Yeah, no, I'm not in good-
Is that on the map over here, by the way?
No, it's off the map.
Off the map. Off the grid. Okay, Mr. Pauli. Okay, Mr. Paulie?
Um, well, I am in favor of it because if it's on the radar, people know that we're interested in it, it could help it get passed to be annexed.
Okay.
And we need more industrialians.
Nice, see, she's good.
We might, we might have other financing mechanisms such as enterprise zones that could work in that particular area.
And as you heard, I'm interested in it only because I think it's available. And it's a good time before somebody else gets down there and does something that may not be as desirable. Okay?
So let me tell you what I've heard. So I've heard the impact or the benefit of looking at this would be economic development, jobs, diversification.
Yes.
Right?
And also, like, don't we have to have so much industrial zoning in our, within our comp plan too, so?
Easy, easy.
I know where you're going.
Okay, but I'm also hearing is this kind of a low priority at this point?
Yes.
So...
A one?
I'm tying my hands up.
Everybody agrees with that, a one?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I think in twelve months.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, explore options for disposing of or developing infill properties. Now, this was mine, so what I mean by this is that as we're aggressively marketing these infill properties, I think the commission is important for them to think about what they want to do when a deal does come to the table. So are we looking at doing a deal, are we looking at selling the property? Is that the commission's focus to make, to generate revenue off of that? Or are we looking to develop the property? So there...
I think, my opinion's both.
Okay.
Because I don't really want to be in the property business. I want somebody to buy it and develop it.
Well, that's, you know, and that's kind of the, it's not the nature of urban renewal. We just kind of put the project together and then sell it.
Sell somebody out to put it together at the end.
And then when we decide what we want to do, is if you want to sell it, do we need to look at how different, what's available to us when we make those deals? Because there are other options in selling the property and working incentives with the developer as well. So you see, if you're more focused on just developing the property, there's a certain set of mechanisms and tools that you can use to incentivize that. If you're looking at generating some revenue from the sale, but you want development also, there are different options available too. So if the commission is interested in looking at those other options, that's kind of part two.
Paul? I think we need to be taking plans and if we have this land, let's take as an example the land north of McDonald's. And there's two big lots right on there where we've staged stuff. And they're, and they're owned by the city, huge parcels, high visibility, buildable. And you can have parking underneath, great locations, and have real high asset value. But really what goes into there that actually creates turn and greater health, a more healthy economy and jobs incentivizes what we do and how we do things. So if in fact that, those properties like right there, let's say as an example, we own the lot right next to McDonald's on the other side. And McDonald's says, we would like to build the brand-new McDonald's there. And we want to put a half a million to a million dollars into that property, rebuilding it. And if we provided that one lot right on Second and, or excuse me, on Doone's Drive, whatever it is that goes down? Down there. They have an easement across it right now. But through the facilitation of us making a deal with McDonald's, and then they come in with all these building permits and improvements and create a new McDonald's like I see that they put in Sandy. You know, where they've really gone in and they're, they're pretty good size operations. Well, what we've done, we've been proactive. We've created building permits, investment, more taxes, and everything like that. We took a lot that's just sitting there right now doing nothing, and we've turned it into, into the leveraging point that actually allows us to create something out of it.
Shovel ready piece.
And that's, that's smart, so...
So I'm wondering if it's on a in case-by-case basis there?
Well, it could be, it could be. And let me point out something too before we go a little bit in further here. Developing the property, if there's a focus on just developing the property, and say you have a piece of property, you want to develop the way you want to develop. Now, Tennessee has it where you'll have a little more leverage in talking with the developer as to what you want out there. And at the same point, they'll have, you'll free up a little bit of money for them too, to give you a nice product. It's going to create a good increment or a higher value project. Whereas if the commission is focused on selling that property to get immediate revenue, then you might be taking away from some of that other, those other things that I mentioned.
Well, I think the object is that, that we want to do what's best for the city. We want to have that input. You know, so just trying to sell it on an immediate basis, generate some cash, probably not in the best interest of the city.
But on Paul, on what Paul was trying to make, if you do make, if you do get that direct or immediate cash, you might have some additional money to go out and make some of these other sites shovel ready.
So I think it's going to be on a size basis here, Doug.
I would think if land is developed appropriately and that the site, it's riverfront property, and I think it has high value. I don't know if, I don't know if a renovated or a bigger McDonald's provides that kind of value.
Right.
And I think, I think frankly, sell it so we can make something else shovel-ready. We want to create the maximum tax increment. And I think, I think riverfront property in particular has the potential of doing that. Parking underneath, I think, is, is a very reasonable thing. For one thing, it's in a floodplain, and so there's going to be limits in terms of what you can do down below.
Okay, Phil?
In terms of disposing and developing, seems to me this is a real staffing issue. Because disposing seems hurt less burdens on staff than development. And one of the issues, and just a sign, and one of the issues that I've always had with urban renewal is that, you know, city officials really aren't. I'm not sure development is their highest, highest and best use of their time. So generally, I'd be inclined towards disposal rather than development. But of course, you want the right thing. I mean, so I'm not sure getting the right thing is really the issue. To me, the issue is whether or not we want the city to be in the development business primarily, or in the, in the business of assisting developers through the disposition of property and the aggregation of it. And my bias would be towards the disposition of it, on that continue.
Okay. Graham?
So I guess there's a couple thoughts. I mean, there's just putting it out there, I mean, nobody's, if it's not out there, nobody's going to know about it. So it's almost like, these are our available properties for sale or potentially donation if your project is, is good. And we reserve the right to analyze how that fits our goal and how that fits the big picture for the area we're looking at. Because you may have a, a site that's sitting in the middle of a, you know, comprehensive master planned area. And if that developer comes and buys it, and you don't have any strings attached on what they can do, and they do a development that's completely out of touch with what your goal is, that's not a situation you want to be in. But we're not going to know, we're not going to have the chance to say yes or no if it's not out there.
We basically need to take what we've done with the 10th Street and 12th Street lot and start labeling these places that we think have possibilities and seeing what comes of it.
On the website, something like that. Here's what's available, doesn't necessarily have to be tied to a price, it's just available, let's talk.
Yeah, that's why the sign says available.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that's, you know...
Slightly a different, I've heard your ad on NPR, or at least on other radio. I've thought about running ads, actually. How much did that cost? Just out of curiosity. That radio ad?
I, I, I got a lot of spots, rotating spots on different programs, and I got weekends, and I got online advertising. And it, for thirteen weeks, fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
Little over. And these are prime, prime spots.
Oh, I've heard it several times.
Yeah, it runs on television as well, and it's...
Got any response?
I've, I've gotten a couple of calls, yes. And it's on, it's on after the Business Report on LTV and some other, a couple of other shows, I think, where they have the really high viewer segments, so...
Okay, so, oh, we got, oh, careful.
So the common things I'm hearing is that we need to market the site so we get the most for it. And part of marketing is letting people know there may be urban renewal funds available. And maybe there's just some concepts, put some broad concepts on them to, we, you know, to pull in these developers and investors and kind of give them, you know, some general ideas. And then they can take it from there.
The, the other piece of that is when we do pull them in, I think the commission needs to know how they want it to work. I mean, they're, they need to have some options in their tool belt. Okay, so this is, this, what this deal is going to look like? Maybe we can go after this option, this is kind of maybe we can sell it for this, or, you know, we want the development to look like this, this is what we want on this property. So this is, all of that said, that's kind of the initiative here is to move forward on that piece, to explore that more, to find out, to be proactive rather than reactive when the developer comes in, to sum it up. General terms, so...
I would agree.
Both.
Okay.
All of the other.
All right.
I would put it on, on priority at, at a five.
Me too.
Four or five, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then to be easy, proactive. What else did I hear there?
What's going to bring in, an investment in, in a sense, tax increment? You know, what are they, what, you know, because if it's, if somebody wants to go in there and put in twenty or thirty million dollars, and maybe we could do a lot of dealing.
There's some case-by-case analysis of...
Yes.
That's right. There will have to be...
Yeah.
We have case for case. So tell me if I'm right here with the impact of the results?
And jobs. What are they going to bring in jobs?
All three of your core values.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and then one to three months, second to...
Yeah.
Okay.
What did, we better see what...
Kathy. Well, I read, I read her comments, and it looked like she said, she wasn't sure what this one meant.
Not sure of the meaning of this one, okay, done.
I did send a response, sent a response to that explaining just basically what I...
Right, right.
Okay. The next is urban renewal incentive program, so...
Oh, that's the one she didn't understand?
That's, yeah. So it's, it's related to this last one.
Remember, these are Kathy's.
Incentive programs we have now are the desire grant and the adaptive reuse grant, which just approved. One that I've been exploring myself is a loan, a revolving loan program. And so I, you know, there are other tools out there. And I think it would be good for the commission to maybe talk about those a little bit, if what, if they're willing to explore other tools, maybe as a plan B, if, if the ones that we have in place now aren't working, if there isn't much interest in these programs, what would we want to look at? Well, we want to look at something like a revolving loan, loan program that the urban renewal district can offer a low interest rate to incentivize possibly be able to offer more money to incentivize larger projects that would have greater increment or create greater value.
Graham?
Oh, sorry.
You go first.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Graham. So I would say, we've had the storefront grant one, and I think that's been very, you know, I think it's been very successful. And that was, that's pretty much typically the only really incentive program that we've had, except for what we've just added.
Right.
So I guess my thought would be, I'm open to that. But I would like to see, since this, we're just now starting taking on kind of this new one, like to kind of see how that one plays out for, for this year before we really start adding to that more. Because we're kind of expanding already what we've been doing with just adding this new one. So I'm, I think it's important to keep this on, on, in the discussion loop. And, but I don't know that I would put it at high priority. I would, I would put it, you know, I don't know, two or whatever, or three. But I, I think I'd like to see how this new adaptive program works out and how...
Could be used as a...
Yeah, well, yeah, we can see what the response is to that. And that may spin into other ideas from it, depending on how, how we, what response we get from it, et cetera, so...
Great.
So if you were going to do a loan, I would, I think that that would probably be not a decision, well, ultimately a decision that we would make, but I would want like a panel of probably bankers to be, you know, we pick, I'd let you design that. But somebody that is in the business of lending, basically, to do that review and then give us basically their recommendation. And I think in terms of, there's different tools that work for different scenarios. And we've got a facade program, that works well for one scenario. Now we've got this internal improvement structural, which works great for that scenario. This loan program may, may work really well for new construction or, or things like that. So kind of each time you have a different tool, it fills a potential need that's out there in the market to kind of bridge, you know, maybe a building on 10th and Main doesn't quite pencil it, but if you had a low-interest loan, then somebody can, can make it work, so...
And you can combine your existing grant programs and forgive us clauses and all kinds of things.
And then, I mean, we still get to look at that and say, okay, this is quite worth the facade grant plus the hundred and fifty internal improvement, plus the loan, plus giving them a piece of property. But maybe it's worth two of those three. I mean, we can independently analyze each one, but, I mean, the more tools we have, the better. And that one's, that fills a lot of needs that are out there that we don't necessarily have tools to, to work on.
The loan.
The loans, yeah.
Doug?
Actually, I'll throw this question to you because my understanding is, you know, interest rates from the feds are all-time lows. Who, who are, I mean, who are we competing with in terms of loans, I guess?
So, yeah, just depends.
I mean, I think, I think if...
The underwriting criteria, you could, you could cut a black on. You could throw it down on a prime spot, and you get a lien on the property, you can, you know, you like the person. None of the money in the bank would do that.
And you're not necessarily always competing either. You could be augmenting, you could be leveraging other well, primary loans that they have as well.
So you could provide a little difference, like, in terms of the capital they have to bring to the table. You know, if you're an owner occupant, you could do improvement loans and get crazy bonded, bonded rates or blended rates that are like bonds and bank financing, and it's really low. But, I mean, if, we could potentially even go lower than that, or we could have a different set of criteria that... So, I mean, it's definitely, it's to be out there. Some people don't love giving these things.
I guess that would be a research question that we would have to really think about, is the loan program. Probably, I don't know, I'd put a three on it, just because I don't think it's that... I, I think with Rocky, we've already got the other new program coming. So, you know, I don't want to, you know, I, I understand what Graham's saying. The more you can offer, the better, I understand that. I just don't, I just don't know what, how much time you're going to have to put on that. And are there other tools that you're talking about besides loans?
Oh, Paul?
Yeah, there, there could be, as I say, it could be a combination of existing like grants and loans, forgiveness clauses in the loan for certain types of development that you want, like if you...
Right, right. So the loan is the last one to come on board, is what you're kind of looking at?
Yeah, that's basically what I'm saying.
Okay.
But it will take a lot of time to, to manage this and oversee it.
This to me is almost like something that should be in the city commission, you know, where they get the bonds or do something with it. But if this becomes part of urban renewal, it just kind of puts it into the fluff zone of something that goes on and on and on, and we never get to a point of ever having an ability to terminate as long as we have some of these vehicles going.
Well, if it's a loan, you have to pay back.
But if it was, but if it was a bond, like Phil Knight said, I want to build a basketball arena in Eugene. So they put together a separate financing package to do that. And if the city wanted to do something like that and wanted to be part of helping to buy down interest rates or creating something using some of our bonding or the city's bonding stuff, that's fine. But for urban renewal to be doing this, this is almost, for me, I would look at it as, as, as a table item for the time being, and we do research on it to see what all of the aspects are down the line. But right now, it's kind of like very premature as far as how it really works and what is the end cost towards a business plan of running an appropriate urban renewal district.
My, my thought, when I initially thought about the loan issue is, what I thought was, okay, you're getting, you're going to get revenue generated in two different ways, at least. You're going to get the direct, immediate revenue from the interest that you're, you're charging on the loan. And then you're going to get a higher value project because you're going to be able to offer more money and let the developer leverage more money to build a better project, a bigger project, which is going to create greater value. And at the same time, you're going to achieve greater increment along the way. So, just kind of a thought process there. But then you look at the management side of it, the underwriting piece, the potential that, you know, you barely got a staff of not even one.
Right, right.
And then you're going to have to go through and probably hire some sort of service for the underwriting, which is going to cost you maybe a quarter of what your loan's going to be, so...
It's just not our priority right now.
Well, it's not. And I don't know whether there's a, an institution around that we could actually move this and collaborate with to do this for us. You know, whether that's, you know, the community bank around here or something like that, that we could move that to, that we don't have to do it, but we encourage them to go here.
They're going to charge us.
They're going to charge us.
Well, no, we're not involved. We're just taking this to the, we're telling this bank...
Well, they're going to charge the city.
We're telling the bank to work with this individual, you know, and, and help assist this individual through this whole thing with our encouragement. We're, we're not involved financially or anything. I'm just wondering if there's a way to do that, but still get a good end product.
Sure, that's something that we have to look into.
Okay, so that's as part of it. All right, Doug?
I guess two things. One is that it's a lot more difficult for the city to do a bond than the urban renewal district to do a bond. The other thing is that, you know, the increment we're currently producing is really limited in terms of what we can do. Does that impact what we can do on the loan? We're tying up financial resources with the loan itself in some fashion. It's going to perhaps reduce some of the other things we've been somewhat successful.
Right, we have to move some money around to get enough for...
Yeah, what was your thought on the budget there for this loan program?
Well...
Seems to me you need a lot.
Yeah, when initially I was going through, I was thinking three hundred thousand dollars. But our first stab at the budget, we were able to shave enough off one of the other programs to get about five hundred thousand, which is what you really need to start out a decent...
Well, you can't get new construction with a loan.
You can't, what?
I said, you wouldn't get anything but a very small building with a loan of five hundred thousand. So you'd have to be a partial loan or something else.
Right, it'd be the start of it, it'd be where you start from, the small step, which would potentially be leveraging primary, other primary levels.
I think we're going to have to revisit this one.
Okay.
That's just my thoughts.
So we'll just kind of leave this blank right now.
Am I getting the hint that this is already budgeted for?
No.
Because that's the hint that I got, and I don't want...
That's why I wanted to have this meeting before we did the...
He looked at it, he said.
Okay. And if we're going down the road that we were at last year at this time...
We're trying to avoid that.
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to, that's the intention to have this meeting right now.
We didn't give it a zero, Eric. We didn't give it a one.
I didn't have a number.
One and a half. Put one point five.
Okay.
What if we put one on, just to make sure that it doesn't flow?
Okay.
See, they, they're better on him than on me.
We appreciate the thought, though.
Good discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Blue Heron. Now, a little background on this, as you know, most of Blue Heron is in the city, it's not only our rural district. It's not only our real district. You have that small piece, it's the admin building there in the front on the turn, the curve of 99.
Does it, the admin building and the parking lot or just the parking lot?
It includes the parking lot.
It's the entire north end lot, so it's not just the admin building.
From the gate forward.
It's on both sides. Service station?
No, not the service.
No, I don't think it's the-
It's just the admin building and the parking lot.
So the, the, the wheels is on one side of that railroad track that goes down to main, because it's Main Street. So one side, it's on both sides of Main Street or just one side of Main?
Just one side.
One side.
Really?
Just the, just the west side of Main Street.
It's on the map.
Magic, you did it.
It's too small. But, yeah, and the city is involved with the consortium and doing a due diligence of that property right now, trying to eliminate all the unknowns, which could be a lot, you know, could be few, but we're, we're working on it now. So that's gonna be a long process before anything is, is developed out there, master plan. So, we are holding those developer roundtables to try to spark some private interest in that property.
What's that?
I'm sorry?
What's the, what's the, what roundtables?
Developer roundtables. So we're, we're inviting prominent developers all over the state and Washington to come and take a tour of the site and learn a little bit more about the site and what the consortium's doing and provide us feedback.
And you're doing that or Metro's doing that?
We're, we're hosting that, Oregon City's hosting.
Good, that's a good idea.
And they're, we're wanting them to provide us feedback on how they see that redeveloping out there, what some of their ideas are as far as the public-prime partnership. And so that sort of thing is we continue our due diligence. So it's gonna be a long, a long process because we want to do it right. And like you said, you know, there's a lot of unknowns out there and we just want to make sure that those are all eliminated. So this is basically, I have this on there because we have a piece of it in the urban renewal district. Is that something that is important to the district or the commission now to look at? Or is it something that we need to put on the back burner a little bit as the due diligence furthers along on the main part?
I'm thinking in between, but we'll go with Paul here.
I think it should be high on our deal because just as part of the, of the real major potential that we just want to have a toe in the water that keeps us up to date with what happens.
That's why I said three, Paul. So that keeps us in the water, but it's not a high priority.
With the ability to jump to five like really fast.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Phil? Has there been any discussion about, I mean, it seems to me if the urban renewal commission could assist Metro and if Metro needs financial assistance, we could actually buy that property, just like we bought property all over the urban renewal district from time to time. That's probably the most we could do in terms of the ability, this body's ability to help Metro achieve the goal which the city should want, which is the proper development of that site. So, I don't know what you guys have been talking about on this regard, but I would think that that's the most, that's the maximum we can do and it seems to me we ought to be just bringing that as a high priority.
The city would be buying the property?
The urban renewal commission could buy it.
Well, so far, that's an interesting idea, but it may not be necessary.
It may not be necessary. I'm just saying, if it is necessary, we ought to be there and ready to-
But it isn't necessary and that's what I'm gonna tell you. But Metro already has the funds, they need to have sufficient funds there to buy it.
Isn't there an auction coming? Has somebody had visits?
They've already, they've already taken bids.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The trustee didn't, didn't accept any of them. And Metro didn't put a number on the table because they want to do more due diligence because they're, they're concerned about the demolition costs primarily. There's also some environmental concerns. But what the trustee has agreed to do is let Metro continue to do due diligence, apply for grants and try to get money in there so that we can do a phase two environmental assessment and also have a more accurate assessment of what the demolition costs are going to be.
Well, if it's not needed, it's not needed.
Yeah, and I just wanted to-
But if it is needed, then we ought to be just in there with-
I do think there may be-
I agree with you, Phil.
A time later when the scope of a proposed project can't really work without urban renewal. And that's when, I think this is a great discussion, but I think we're just a little bit ahead of-
And the thing, and one more point. If, if, if in fact, this is gonna drag on for six months and if in fact, there's a chance that the urban renewal commission or the city of Oregon City really, because again, it's just a shelter. If the city of Oregon City can affect this some positive way by expanding our urban district to include the entire Blue Heron site, then why the hell we go ahead and do it now? Because it might pay off in six months from now if this thing is gonna drag on.
I would not strongly, I would strongly disagree with that, including it. We already have a huge population in Clackamas County that's against urban renewal. And so we are gonna have to do a lot of thinking about expanding that urban renewal.
My question would be what, what's required to expand it and what do we have to do?
Why?
Well, they did it four years ago. You were, you watched.
Yeah, but, but-
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't think that they had missed that.
No, yeah, I don't have to. My question is, we are, we are able to expand it. We have to put on the ballot.
We have to put it on the ballot.
And Betty's point is, well, take it.
Yeah.
If we're putting on the ballot to buy it and we don't have any idea how it's gonna develop, I'm not sure I'd vote for it.
Right.
I didn't know I had to go, I didn't know I had to go on the ballot.
Yeah, and the timing isn't right anyway because when I say, when we say we have to put on the ballot the other shell with the city commission hat, they're the ones that have to put it on the ballot.
Right.
And I'm pretty sure they're not gonna do that as long as they're gonna have the water roll back.
Yeah. Yep. It's one priority.
So it's timing, it's just timing. This is a great option to have.
It's something to have on our radar. It's important for us to know and think about.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm thinking of three.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking about, actually, I like to revisit this every one to three months too just to see what's going on with it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we could get like-
I can give you regular updates on what's happening.
So we could go six to 12 months, even on this, on Eric's little sheet down there.
And believe me, if something happens down there and the dynamics change and we see enough, we'll bring it to you before the 12 months.
Yeah. What is, what is your time, guess on the timeframe for Metro taking title if everything went according to plan? According to Metro's plan?
I think it's probably gonna be at least-
Six months?
So I'd say six to eight months, but I'd be looking more at eight months.
Eight, three, two, yeah. So three to-
Three.
Yeah, three.
How, how's this look here, impact benefit? Maximize or facilitate Blue Heron development as kind of general?
Okay, sure.
Six to 12?
Well, we want to visit it all the time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so when you put six to 12 months, Eric, does that mean that we're not gonna see it or it won't come up to our attention for six months?
No, David just said he would be doing-
Before we decide to focus on it heavily, before, you know, you get your updates.
So as long as we, as long as we get the updates, all right, cool. Okay.
Kathy, do you want to look at Kathy's?
Kathy said a five and she said move immediately onto this.
Okay.
All right.
I, I always thought that would should be higher than three. I really think it should be four.
Well, I think it's on everybody's radar and I know that if anything comes out, David and Eric's gonna pull it up. I mean, I think a three is a holding place.
I don't know about David, but I'll definitely keep your number.
Yeah.
The truth is, is at the city level, it's at a five.
Yeah.
And this is a fallback.
It already is, right.
Urban renewal will be a five if-
I feel better.
There's already a process in place.
The reason it's there is because it's already, there's things we're being worked on, but-
It's something that's always, it's always on the radar.
Every single week.
Always on the radar.
Whoa.
That's it, wow.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Well, you have down here two more things.
Now, we've gone through those.
Oh, we already did those. That's right.
And so now it's an opportunity to think of, are there any more activities that you've had in your mind or stirring around that you wanted to bring out tonight or something, something else that you feel like-
You just couldn't leave it alone, couldn't you?
I gotta keep going. My wife doesn't let me come home until eight o'clock.
All right, I think Phil's got his hand up over here. Well, I just, I don't think this is gonna fall on fertile ground, but we do the industrial lands in Oregon City. We do industrial lands close to I-205, it seems to me. And I think that the city made a fundamental error years ago in zoning that area where Home Depot is anything other than industrial. And I would love to see them as part of this comprehensive plan. This is not our agenda, but just as something that I think we ought to take another look at as a city, as a community, how do we settle that property? Okay, Doug?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. That's something we would go through the planning commission, city commission. The comment I would have, yes, you sell the rezoning occurred with a comprehensive plan. The point is that urban district, urban renewal district existed a long time without being industrially zoned and nothing happened. I mean, the, the interest came out to actually initiate with the Mills Corporation.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, we had it for a longer period of time in industrial than we have it under this mixed use.
Okay, anybody else?
Paul? I'm, I would like to see kind of almost a means testing of our, of when we put money out to make sure that we're getting improvements in the economy, improvements in jobs or improvements in tax increment. And somehow we try to weight those to a degree where we, where it becomes, where we're more responsible about how we put money out. That's all, just some, just being smarter and trying to come up with a formula that allows us to, to kind of, kind of some, something agreed upon so that we're, we're smarter. Because I think that if we don't reflect that we're using smart choices and smart criteria, it's gonna come up back to us and bite us.
Paul, do you think those are smart criteria?
I don't know that they, I don't know that we're, we're-
It's a start.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it is a start. But, but it's, we, if anything, I came out of reviewing and creating that financial thing was is, I don't want to see same old, same old coming along. I want to see us really have results, really, really come along and, and, and show. It's like when I was going through and vetting it with somebody and somebody said, looked at it and said, well, we're talking about the Cove. And he said, they looked down there and said, wow, you mean the Cove at $35 million doesn't cover its debt? Yeah? And doesn't create any jobs? Yeah? And, and then they said-
It creates jobs.
Well, it's construction jobs, but not permanent jobs.
But the building they're building, I mean, it's, you know.
But the scenario-
Let me offer up something here. What, one of the good things you guys have done through this exercise is these core values aren't just for us to all remind each other of what's important to the community through urban renewal. They're also a good tool to remind potential developers and investors who hopefully will be responding to these ads. They give us, I mean, I can't tell you how many times, well, I can tell you how many times, three times in the last six months, a developer or a person posing as developer has come to the city and asked about, hey, what about Blue Heron? We'd like to do something on Blue Heron. Well, the four core virtues that this commission, the city commission rather, identified is, I hand that to them and say, well, these are the, this is the beginning. And so if, if you want to be thinking, because a lot of these developers, I think, are, they're waiting for Metro and others to finish up due diligence because there's too much risk right now on Blue Heron. But once that becomes more and more clear and eventually we're gonna kind of know all the risks, sometime between knowing all the risks and knowing most of the risks, we're gonna start to see more likely development plans come forward. And I've told them upfront, these are the fourth, you know, you're gonna need to hit those things. Now, that's where it gets, can get kind of squishy because some of those are pretty broad, broad terms. But that gives you a basis, a starting point. And then if I were you, I would look at those core values and every single time you get a project, case by case, look at those core values and ask yourself if you think those things are satisfied. You know, for you, based on what I've heard here, the Cove, not so much on job creation other than construction. And that's probably correct. But no one's to say that those categories, you haven't decided which of those are most important, how they're weighted. I mean, you had a, you had a proposal at the rivers that had hundreds of jobs, but the argument was that they weren't maybe high enough wage jobs. So even amongst job creation, you're gonna have a decision to make. But those are good, this is a great start to be able to have these and be able to, you know, we'll, we'll write them down and put them in a high profile place on the website.
Actually, I'd like to put them on the back of your nameplates at the dais.
I would like that too.
The memory part.
Yeah, just to have that constant reminder that we have to be fiduciably responsible to all of the citizens. You know, this is, you know, this is not just-
And it's a little different than every other business and every other banking proposition. That's why it's urban renewal. It's more risky. So you're, you know, always, you're gonna always have that conflict between cash, return on investment is not quite as good as I would, if you're a bank president, that's one issue here.
It's a little gray area.
It is.
Yeah.
It's just the definition of urban renewal. And it goes against all of your business acumen and all of your life experience, but you have to balance that risk.
Okay.
Not afraid, and I'm not afraid pragmatically to, to, to attempt to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very.
Doug, behind your-
Doug, I mean, job creation is extremely important. I don't want to be misunderstood, but actually, we're not a jobs poor city. And the reason is that the institutions, the hospital, the college, the county and so forth. But Alice Norris has liked to quote that the daytime population of Oregon City is about twice what the residential population of Oregon City is. So a lot of people coming.
It's not on your core values, but the bottom line, Paul, this gets back to your point. Thing doesn't generate increment, it really doesn't matter.
That's right.
You don't function if you don't generate some.
That's right.
And so, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's part of your frustration. Why has this district lasted so long and why do we have this many projects left?
Yeah, and, and why do we, why do we have debt and we have a line of credit when we're pulling in 1.8 million bucks a year? And, and we're spending money and like crazy and we don't have, seems like, we've gotta have, start getting this return and how we've been making the judgmental calls and-
We may need some different projects.
Yeah.
So what else were we working on here?
I was just, if you had any other ideas that you wanted to present before the commission and other activities that you think are important, just to focus on.
I have a real newbie question, so please pardon my newbieism, but-
Newbie.
I, I make up my own words, so you don't know this yet about me, but you will discover, yes. You will discover this. So I, during my orientation, I talked to you a little bit about, you know, what was going on with Beaver Creek and if we might be able to try to bring that before the voters again and try to get it annexed again. So, is there any possibility of having urban renewal funds available to try to, you know, spur investment maybe in some of these areas that we're thinking about annexing? I talked to the mayor of Twollet and it was just interesting. He was telling me that they used a lot of their urban renewal funds for their development. And you see all the development they have. It brings in a lot of revenue for the city.
They buy the property and put in the infrastructure.
They have, they have 50, they have 50% of their tax base is commercial, 50%.
Wow, yeah.
And then 50% is residential. We have a deficit here because what, 40% is the county?
County.
And that 40% is the county, so we're not getting taxes from that, our tax base. So we really need to build up our tax base by having the light industrial. How can we bring that in?
20%, it's searches.
We actually did that in red soils. I mean, that's, we brought in the infrastructure and it worked.
And it worked until the county took over and, well, until they bought some land.
No, they hadn't bought it. They, they gave us the land to sell. That, that private property is actually, was originally county land. There, and they haven't bought, they haven't bought land there yet.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I just wanted to answer her question.
All right, Eric.
Okay.
So Carol, if I can answer your question?
No, that's okay.
The only way, we can't extend current urban renewal funds outside the district. So we can't use that money to leverage somewhere else.
So it would have to be the broad end of the-
So we have to create an entire new urban renewal district, which would go to a vote. And it would have to be annexed. You have to create an urban renewal district. And so it's a-
You're better, you're too late.
There's one, there's one, I think 22A parcel that's in the city in that area. Everything else is outside the city, so it'd have to be annexed.
Yeah. But in the future, if something got annexed in, then we could choose to make that part of it.
We could choose to make that a, a separate urban renewal district.
Like South End Bowl.
Right. To spur investment.
For industrial...
So it could be used as a tool.
We talked about it.
I think we've got her going here, Paul.
Excuse my newbieism.
Let me get you a picture.
Okay. I like the spelling right here. Yes. Thank you.
We have enough to work.
I think, I think you have a lot that you're going to have to work on.
Yes.
Do you think you have enough to work on? We're going to have to work.
No, I'll get some more.
No, I'm good.
That's, that's what I worry, that you're working on too much.
How about a baseball stadium?
Yeah.
I would, we could outdo, we could do, outdo Milwaukee. We could, we surely...
Yeah, Adrian.
But I, and I know this developer out there.
It would be helpful, you know, it would be helpful if Portland could produce winning teams.
They have with the soccer.
Okay. So is it a, a good time to ask about, should I do this tonight or Wednesday night about, about the code? An update on that at all? Should we do that Wednesday or...
Yeah.
Probably Wednesday.
Is that an executive session thing?
Probably would be. We're, we're waiting for another written update to their proposal.
Cool. I just wondered about it. So, all right. Let's...
Well, I just want to thank you all for your participation in a great discussion.
Have we, have we got any update on, let's say, the, the north end that would include Rossman landfill?
No.
Do you guys know how, do you remember last year when you tried to do this?
No.
The year before.
No, you don't.
The year before.
Well, seriously, though, 12 months ago, we tried to do this. We have Jeanette Lerner here, who's the most learned urban renewal person in the state.
Yeah, but Kathy isn't here. So I think that was not...
Yeah, that's right. I don't think it was only Kathy. And it wasn't Kathy.
It wasn't.
I just wanted to join Eric in thanking you because you guys are starting to get things done.
It's because you hired Eric.
You hired me.
That's right. Oh, yeah, that's right.
I put this together and then a brief work plan presented to you Wednesday night.
Oh, yeah.